Here comes Charlene. She got it.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Town and Thompson Planning and Zoning Commission, special meeting on Wednesday, July 22, 2020, to order. It is 6:02 PM. We are meeting via Zoom. I will begin with a roll call of numbers. Mr. Hill?
Alvin Hill, present.
Mr. Santos?
Ryan Santos, present.
Mr. Krogo?
Mike Krogo, present.
Ms. Chetel?
Ms. Chetel, present.
Ms. Langlois?
Charlene Langlois, present.
Mr. Wirth?
Robert Wirth, present.
Mr. Rice?
What was that? Was that me, Joe?
Yes, that was you.
I'm sorry. I was reading something. John Rice, present.
And Joseph Perotti Brown. We will seat Alvin Hill for Randy Blackmer and Brian Santos for Ms. DeRozan. Item two is the public hearing for the proposed revision of Thompson zoning regulations and zoning map. The public hearing is now open. The way we'll proceed is for those members of the community who would like to be recognized, please indicate your name and address in the chat function. We will recognize you in that order. If you are unable to access the chat function, there seems to be a lull, feel free to unmute yourself and request to be recognized.
Is anyone having trouble using the chat function who wish to make it? Oh, good, Joe. Thank you.
I was like popping it up once for people to find it.
Charlene, thank you for the soup.
You're welcome.
It's okay. It's a part of the record now.
I know. And it's good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Harry Heller. I'm having no luck with the chat function, but I would like to speak when you're ready.
Absolutely. Kick us off, Attorney Heller.
Okay. For the record, Harry Heller, I'm an attorney with an office at 736 Norwich, New London Turnpike in Ankaesville, and I'm representing Strategic Commercial Realty, doing business as Rossin Materials. I would like to comment on two provisions contained in Article 5A, Section 3, earth and gravel removal. And before I start, I'd just like to commend the commission and your staff for all of the time that's been put in on the drafting of these regulations and the public informational meetings that you've had and and taking comments. I realize that you're all volunteers and this has involved a lot of time and there've been significant results. As you are aware, during those informational meetings, myself and Madeline Smith, representing Rossin, attended those meetings and made comment on a number of provisions contained in the Earth Product Excavation Regulations, a number of which you've incorporated into the revised regulation, which is being considered at public hearing for adoption this evening. I would like to comment again on item 9C, which I had commented on previously. And that provides that no closer than eight feet to the maximum groundwater level on the property, except in locations where permanent ponds are proposed as part of the excavation plan. The Connecticut Public Health Code requires a minimum of 18 inches of undisturbed receiving soil to site an onsite septic system in accordance with the Public Health Code. You are requiring in these regulations eight feet. I assume that the purpose of the regulation is to ensure that when an earth product excavation is completed, that the site is left in a condition where it will be usable for a productive purpose that's authorized pursuant to the zoning regulations, whether that be residential, commercial, or industrial use, depending on the location and the zoning district that the property is located in. When we made our presentation earlier, we had suggested five feet above maximum groundwater level, which I still thought was excessive. I feel that three is adequate, but we have proposed five. And I just want to give you an idea of what we're talking about here. If you take a 40-acre site, which, when you look around Eastern Connecticut and Southeastern Connecticut, I think you'd find that about a 40-acre site is an average size of a typical excavation operation. That's going to leave about 1,700,000 yards of structural material in the ground that is a valuable, marketable product. And that's using the eight-foot requirement contained in Section 9C of your regulation versus the five feet that we had proposed. It's a waste of natural resources and it accomplishes no productive purpose because at five feet, you're still orders of magnitude above the level above groundwater, which the Public Health Code allows for the siting of onsite septic systems on that property. Now, earth product business is a function of the marketplace, like most capitalistic markets. If there is a demand, there is going to be a source created in order to satisfy that demand, whether it's in your town or some other town. So by leaving marketable aggregate material in the ground that's accomplishing no productive purpose, what you're doing is, one, creating the propensity that material is going to have to be hauled from a more remote site, which creates more truck traffic on the road, more pollution, and more disturbed areas that are in active earth product excavation. And number two, it's going to require new sites to be opened where there is still good marketable material that can be excavated and sold from an existing earth product excavation location. So I would ask the commission to reconsider the requirements of Section 9C, giving due consideration to the fact that a five-foot buffer above seasonally high groundwater not only meets the Public Health Code, but even satisfies the requirement for a septic system to be sited without having it engineered by a professional engineer. And I think accomplishes purposes that satisfy the general evaluation criteria in your regulations by allowing a valuable resource to be excavated without the need to create new sources of supply. The second item that I would like to comment on is Section E14, concerning renewals. We had some discussion about renewals in your informational meetings. And when an applicant applies for a special permit for earth product excavation, the commission is required to, number one, determine that the application satisfies the specific permitting criteria contained in your regulations, and, secondly, satisfies the general evaluation criteria, like traffic impact on neighborhoods, impact on property values, that are to be applied by your commission in evaluating every special permit application. Once you issue that special permit, you've made a factual determination that those criteria have been satisfied. So I would submit to you that on a renewal, what you should be considering is whether or not the excavation is being conducted in accordance with the plan that you've approved and any conditions that you may have imposed on that approval. And that should be the extent of your consideration on a renewal. As long as the excavation is proceeding in accordance with the plan and the conditions, there's really no further consideration by the commission. The information that you're requiring in Section 14, in my opinion, goes beyond that. The statement from a licensed land surveyor or an engineer that the excavation is being conducted in accordance with the approval is certainly legitimate and should be required by the commission. But then it has language that says, "Such statement, along with the site plan, shall include the amount of material removed, current contours, and cross-sections highlighted in contrasting color in the area excavated during the preceding 12-month period." I do not believe that you need that information once you have a certification from a licensed professional engineer that the excavation is being conducted in accordance with the approval. And that is a significant expense, particularly where you require renewals on an annual basis. The typical expense to go out and have that work done and produce that plan, again, depending upon the size of the excavation, could be anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 on an annual basis. And I don't think that it provides you with any probative information that you need beyond the certification of the engineer that the operation is being conducted in accordance with the permit. And of course, if you question that, your zoning enforcement officer has authority to go on the property and if there is a dispute as to whether or not that certification is accurate, you can always issue a cease and desist order and give the applicant an opportunity to show cause, in which case you may want additional information. But to require that information of every applicant on every annual renewal, I believe, is excessive. And those are my comments, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Attorney Heller. If anyone else is similarly experiencing difficulty with the chat function and wishes to be recognized, certainly can unmute yourself and...
I think five feet is reasonable. That's my point.
Thanks.
Five feet is reasonable.
He said, "Thank you." He said, "Thank you."
Ms. Blanchard, I see you've unmuted yourself and turned on your camera. Did you wish to be recognized?
Yes, if it's an appropriate time.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I have a couple of minor comments on the regulations. I have them listed by page, but I also do want to say thanks to the commission and all the staff for working so hard. I know it's been a multi-year process and I think we're really bringing Thompson into the future, and I'm thrilled about that with the new zoning regulations. So, good work. I'm not representing any applicants. I'm just here as a citizen of town and local engineer who comes before the commission. So on page 20, it's the thing about requiring public notice. And in one section, I think under zone changes, you specifically use the language "certificate of mailing." But on page 20, for special permits, the language is just looser. It says, "Provide proof of mailing." I think it would be cleaner if it was consistent and both articles said "certificate of mailing."
Janet, could you tell me the article and section numbers? Because I'm trying to make the notes on a copy of the draft that we get tonight.
Okay.
And the page numbers are different on different iterations of edits.
Okay. It's Article 3C, Section 7, Public Hearing Requirements for Special Permits, B. It's just a vaguer language, and I think the more specific language you have earlier in the regulations is better.
Yeah, this is Cindy. That's correct. I picked that up, too, when I reviewed it.
Okay, the next comment I have is on page 49. So let me see what section that is. Okay, it is Article 4F, Section 3, General Development Standards. And this is in the newly created downtown mill rehabilitation district, which I think is going to be excellent to help our mills get redeveloped. There's under C, lot coverage. I think we need to add one word to probably make the intent that the commission is looking for. There's a sentence, and it says, "The total lot coverage within the DMRD may be increased 5% above existing conditions of right." That makes a lot of sense because a lot of the land in this area has high impervious already. But then it's qualified with up to a maximum total impermeable lot coverage of 75%. And so if you're allowed to increase it by 5%, what if you're already over the 75%? So I believe there should be an or in there, that the total lot coverage may be increased 5% above existing conditions or up to a maximum total of 75%. That way, projects that are already highly impervious, you know, above the 75% can still have a 5% expansion. That just seemed to make more sense to me. Actually, my next two comments are on the earth and gravel removal section. And I specifically agree with Attorney Heller on both of his comments, so I won't re-go into those. For the renewals, having to do a new topographic survey and provide colored cross-sections is extremely onerous on an annual basis. So I do agree with both of his comments, and I'm not representing any earth or gravel excavating companies. But there's another, in that section, under the exemptions, it's Article 5A, Section 3, B exemptions, 1. There is a list of exceptions, and I don't understand B, C, D, or F. So perhaps somebody can look at that.
What page are you on, Janet?
57.
Okay. All right.
Janet, would you mind repeating your comment? Because now I'm on the page.
Yes, it is under B exemptions.
Okay.
I understand A, that makes a lot of sense, but I'm not sure what B, C, and D mean. Excavation is greater than two feet at grade. If that means that the excavation is only two feet, you can't even put in a typical house foundation without excavating eight feet. So I'm not sure where the two feet came from. And it's kind of similar things with C and D. I'm not sure what your intent is. I don't really understand it. I'm not sure those three are necessary. I think A, E, and G are all good.
So you think we should remove B and D, Janet?
Well, B, C, and D.
B, C, and D.
Cut slope is, C reads, "Cut slope is increased to over five feet in height." And I'm not sure if that means like the depth of an excavation because to put in a house, you'd have to go down eight feet to put in a full foundation.
Okay.
And F, as well, you said?
Yes, F, I'm not, I don't really understand why that would be in the exceptions list. I might be missing your intent. Perhaps I just don't understand it. But I was a little confused. On, I guess my next comment is in the parking regulations. It's on page 89. There's a bullet point, D, points of entrance and exits. Number five seems to be addressing only non-residential parking areas containing fewer than five spaces. So that would be a four-space parking lot. This paragraph is relevant for, so perhaps it's appropriate that another paragraph for parking for widths of entrance and exits for parking lots with five or greater could be added.
Tira, do you see where that is?
I do. I'm scribbling. I'm just listening today. I'm not yapping.
Yeah, no, exactly. I'm doing the same, but I just wanted to...
I'm definitely willing to make a memo with these comments and send it to the staff. I know you've had a lot of good workshops, and I could have brought up those comments earlier. But this afternoon, I decided to really look at them.
At the risk of making this more conversational than it was sort of intended, which is more to be just listening. Brian, did you want to clarify any of that for Janet while she's here and asking? Because that was after you and I tried to fix that section.
Yeah, Janet, the B, C, and D, and F, I was the one that came up with that, and there was a strategy behind that. But I understand, and now rereading it, I'll have to take a look at it again. Again, we're kind of just listening tonight. But let me just let me just think about that section again and get back to you on that.
This is a point of order. I apologize. I'm not sure when Mr. Popowski arrived, but I do want to seat Mr. Popowski for Mr. Blanchard. Thank you. Was that all, Ms. Blanchard, or?
Just a couple more brief things.
Absolutely.
One is that I couldn't find in the regulations, I know there's one interior or flag lot is permitted behind a regular frontage lot, but I didn't see anywhere where the frontage required for an interior flag lot was described. Typically, it's been 40 or 50 feet. Perhaps it's in the regulations, but I didn't notice it.
Good point. Now that I think about it, I don't think I saw it either. Right now, it's 50 feet.
And I'm almost done. My last two comments actually have to do with the map, the zoning map. I noticed, and again, I'm just speaking on behalf of businesses in Thompson. I'm not representing them or being compensated by them, but 49 Thompson Road is where the Anya Restaurant is located. That area was formerly zoned industrial. A few years ago, when the restaurant went in, it was rezoned to commercial. And it's adjacent to the new corridor development zone, but the current regulations have that zoned residential agriculture. So I'm thinking that that was potentially an oversight, that that one property is adjacent to the corridor development zone. It has an existing commercial business on it. Perhaps that property could be included in the corridor development zone.
Janet, could you just repeat what the actual address of that parcel is for me?
49 Thompson Road.
Thank you.
And a few years ago, when it was rezoned commercial, the neighbors and everybody came out to support that. So if it goes back to residential, it might pose problems for expansion of that business in town. The other comment I have, and again, it's only kind of being familiar with a business in town, is and nobody's potentially aware of this, but the Village Plaza site, which is on Route 171, right near the corners of, corner of Woodstock and Putnam, that property is unusual because the front half of that property was zoned commercial, and the back half of that property is zoned like RA80. There's a new owner for that plaza, and that plaza's frontage is completely full of commercial uses, so it seems really a long shot to think that somebody would build a house behind it. And I'm wondering if that whole property, which is 22 Woodstock Road, instead of the zone line going through the middle of it, if that whole property was zoned in the business development, it would make it easier for that business to expand on their property.
And that's where it would fall if it wasn't bisected, Janet?
Yes, exactly. It's in the purple. I'll actually hold up the zoning map. I don't know if you can see it. The very corner of town. The very corner of town. And the adjacent properties are zoned in that purple, which is Mackey's and the liquor store there. They're all commercial. It's just the property is cut in half by a zone line. And that's the last of my comments.
That was a good comment, Janet, because about a year or so ago, I had somebody who wanted to build a residential unit behind there. Thank God they gave up on the idea because at that time I had no answer for them. Because of the frontage getting into there would have been rare a lot, but it's like, so that's good. I like that suggestion.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Blenke.
You're welcome.
Joe, can I make a comment?
Yes, I'd like, since we have Janet on the line here. Back to Attorney Heller's comments on contrast and color in the excavator during preceding twelve-month period. The reason for that, it was a lot easier for the commission, sitting there, listening to the engineer just pointing to the map means it doesn't help us. Now, is there another way, Janet, other than coloring that you could do? Crosshatches, is there something that would identify an area that has been excavated in that twelve-month period? I know color is costly.
I, it's not the coloring, it's doing a new topographic survey over the area that has been gravled over the last year. So Attorney Heller's suggestion that the professional engineer write a statement that the gravel operation is being conducted in accordance with the approved permit, that's going to require the engineer to go to the site, maybe even with a GPS and take a couple elevation measurements. Or you know, so I think the commission would have you know, a sense that the work was going according to the approved plan and not you know, just willy-nilly.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I can respond. I, I'm not, speaking for myself, I don't think I'm in disagreement that I think that the providing the current contour lines every twelve months might be excessive where I think just telling us some spot elevations of the deepest parts of excavation and just telling us where you are in that excavation is probably more appropriate, instead of coming up with a complete contour. So I'll bring that back up to the group for further discussion later, but just wanted to provide that information.
I think that's a good idea, Brian.
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll talk about that, I guess, after we close the hearing. But yeah, I can understand that from Attorney Heller's standpoint and as well with you, Janet.
Cindy, did you want to?
Yes, I did. I was talking to a builder today up in the assessor's office. And he had asked me about the exemption of how many cubic yards on property that's being worked on. And I said, we went down from three thousand to fifteen hundred cubic yards. I still don't understand why we did that, so. And I don't know what the issue was at three thousand, so it's just something to think about. If you're doing a subdivision and you've got three thousand cubic yards, and if it worked before, why wouldn't it work now? So I want to bring it up so we can discuss it. I don't know what the value, I know I had said why, and I really don't know what was said when I did, but it was blown over, so. I just thought I would mention that. It seems, it seems just such a drastic change from what we've been doing for years. And maybe Alvin can have some input in that because he, you know, was the CEO. Maybe older members on the commission could put some input into that. Why that large change.
I think it's been around, Cindy, since the regulations were written back in the seventies, I believe.
Seventy-five.
Yeah. So certainly when we get to the discussion portion, definitely worth
Okay.
Discussing, thank you, Cindy. Attorney Smith?
Good evening. I would reiterate Janet and Harry's sentiments. You guys are doing a great job. I think it's been very productive, provided a lot of clarifications. I did send some comments to Tyra. I just want to put them on the record. We obviously stand with Attorney Heller's position regarding the renewals and the distance from the groundwater. A couple other things, just small. The regulations still didn't specify a type of bond the town will accept. So if we can just specify that, that would be great. I know it was discussed. It may just have been an oversight. And then I saw the fee schedule at the end, but in the special permit section, I don't think it mentions anywhere about the fee schedule. So it may be nice just to add a line that the fee schedule is located in appendix, whatever it may be, just to direct people to that. That's all I have.
Madeline, it is in the definitions that cash and surety bonds are the forms of bond acceptable, but I do have your notes. So I'll include them in this latest markup before Cindy and I go back and make our sort of final punch list.
Great, thank you, Tyra.
Joe, also, one other thing I picked up on page twenty, and I know it's in a couple of other places. When we're, the applicant has to post the sign and the public hearing is continued, and so the sign must be changed. It says, "In case of extensions to the public hearing, the date, time, and location information is to be continually updated for the benefit of the public." So after the word "updated," comma, "by the applicant," or I don't know if you need a comma there, our editor will tell us that. "Updated by the applicant for the benefit of the public." So that's a couple of places throughout the document where it mentions the sign.
Thank you.
Oh, I see where it is. Okay, I got that, Cindy.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may speak, John Rice. Just going back to that three thousand yard removal. I think the consensus was that people were abusing that and not getting a permit. It's very difficult to tell, you know, three thousand yards or four or five thousand. So I think that we cut it back to that fifteen hundred yards. If you look at an operation, you see, you know, twenty feet of embankment, ten feet tall. You know, there's a lot more yards being taken out. And to the other part about someone who made a comment about a subdivision. If that work, that material is being removed in conjunction with an approved subdivision, it's not necessary to get a gravel permit.
That is correct, and that is articulated in the new draft as well.
So why is there a concern? Somebody, was it Cindy that brought that up?
Yeah, I don't think he was talking about subdivision, John. I think he was just talking about one lot he had or something like that.
If it's not a gravel operation, then I don't think, I think if you have to clear a lot for a house or something, you take the excess material out. You don't have to get a permit to do that, I wouldn't think.
But if they're clearing over fifteen hundred cubic yards, doesn't that mean that they have to get a permit?
So what would be the difference of an individual, for a homeowner, building a house to take off in excess of that? Where if he was doing a subdivision, he doesn't need a permit?
Okay, but so what is the intent of that, then? Who do you, who do you let get?
Just to read it, guys, to read what it actually says. "Excavation, removal, filling, or grading in conformance with an approved building subdivision or development plan with the following exceptions." So if it's an approved building permit, plan, whatever, if he's got to excavate for his foundation, he's already exempted. So as I read this, that fifteen hundred cubic yards per year is more like a guy who's got some acreage that he is pulling out to monetize a certain amount and will let him do it up to fifteen hundred currently, previously, or the current draft that we have. It was three. So there's what it's meant to capture.
And you've, and John, and members of the zoning commission, you've said that that has happened in the past years, that people have done that without permits?
Yes, I'm aware of that, yeah. Because people are just digging gravel out and say, well, I'm only taking fifteen hundred yards a year, so I don't have to do that. But it's really a gravel operation. I mean, this is small time. It's not like the previous request that we have for gravel mining. This is, you know, an individual just has a piece of land and he digs gravel when he needs it.
I had asked this person today, I said, "Do you have a building permit? Do you have a permit to do it?" And, you know, he said, "No."
Then he can't do it. Just, I think Tyra just clarified that. If it's a building permit, then he should be able to take the excess material out.
Okay.
It sounds clear in the draft as Tyra read it.
Okay.
How is it measurable?
Yeah, that's true.
On the integrity of the person.
It's not, yeah.
You're always going to run into a certain amount of provability problem.
I think it should say reasonable rather than number, because you have no way of measuring whether I took out fifteen hundred yards or fifteen thousand.
But by the same token, Bob, what's reasonable? What's reasonable to you is not reasonable to me.
Yeah, this is true.
You have to have a number in there and the best guess. You know, like I say, if you see somebody wants to build a home and all of a sudden he's selling, you know, he's selling gravel. The word is good, so that he's, you know, he's actually mining all this stuff.
So?
And we can hire Janet to go in and measure, measure and give us a cubic yard, how much they took out.
Okay. All right, since it doesn't seem like there's a lot of people here to talk. So that brings up something that occurred the other day. A hundred thirty-nine acres. They have a house in the front, which is on two separate lots, one point three nine acres. And so there, in the back there, it was logged way before they bought the property. So basically what they're doing is they're leveling out a field. It's a large field because eventually they're going to put a clover, you know, pasture there. They're going to plant it with clovers. And basically what they use that property for is hunting. So in a hundred thirty-nine acres, obviously they can. So the complaint came in that they're excavating without a permit. They're not taking, so they have little stockpiles there. I mean, I literally took a ride out there on their little automobile that goes out in the woods. I don't know what they're called. Held on for my dear life. But they have little stockpiles and what they're going to do when they finish getting the boulders and everything out, they're going to spread that stockpile out and then seed. That person does not need a permit. Am I, that's what I called you for, Alvin, the other, you know, when I called you, to find out what your experience is something like this. They don't need a permit for that from what I can see in the regulations. Anybody?
The threshold for where they need the permit is what gets stated. Now, whether it stays at the level that's been posited or adjusted to some other level, that's the trigger threshold. And what you got the complaint about, as we discussed, was only sort of that they were excavating. It was really that a neighbor just didn't like that somebody was doing something on the property.
They didn't like the noise. And the noise is going to last.
But only part of that was associated with excavation, I thought you told me.
Well, they didn't like the noise, but they're clearing their land to make it, to make the pasture, the field, whatever you want to call it, to be flat and better looking than what it is now. I just don't think that, I didn't think that we had any position, the only position we have in that, the town, is to check with wetlands. And I told them that was my responsibility as, you know, a member, as staff. And they do have to check with the wetlands and, you know, Marla does have to go out there. But other than that, there weren't any huge, you know, any soil pile was, if it was a foot that was high, one or two feet. So, and that's all going to be respread, but they're not taking anything off the property. They're not selling anything.
Well, I guess the relevant question is, are they excavating more than fifteen hundred cubic yards per year on their property?
Well, right now it's three thousand.
Well, right now it's three thousand, but in the context of the draft that we're discussing. Because if they are not, then they are still able to do all of that without putting their hand up.
Yeah.
So what was your determination when you were there?
There's a little, there were little piles all over the place. And nothing was being removed, so.
Mr. Chairman, my comment would be, it's a large area that a person is cleaning out.
Yeah.
Is that as long as the individual's not selling material. I don't think that fifteen hundred or three thousand comes into play.
Yeah.
He's doing a landscaping job on his property, but he has a hundred and something acres to landscape where, well, we only have five.
I mean, he's not doing all a hundred and something, but.
He's not selling the material. I says, "Go at it."
So I guess the complaint would have been twofold. Are they excavating illegally? And then she didn't like, the complaintant didn't like the noise.
Well.
Any other comments at this time from the public in regards to the regulation draft?
I would like to say something, Carolyn.
Yeah, Ms. Rice?
I did send an email to Tyra, I don't know if you got it, Tyra, about the ground.
I did, Carolyn. I just haven't had time to respond, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm sure you've been busy. But I just wanted to bring up the fact that where the groundwater protection is discussed in the regulations seems to me misplaced. It's not, it doesn't show up in the index. It shows up on, oh gosh, I forget what page it is. Shows up under
Somewhere around page eighty-six.
Low-Impact Development. Let's see, yes, you're right, eighty-seven. It shows up under Low-Impact Development Guidelines, is it? How is this?
It's just the Low-Impact Development Section.
Okay, yes. So to me, it seems a little bit buried. And I think perhaps it should have a section of its own under special provisions. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention so that the public is aware if you do decide to move that. And the other thing that was on my mind is, the other night when it was the question and answer forum, a couple of issues came up that I thought it was important to speak about at the public hearing so that, you know, people who are following this would be aware of the fact that it seems that someone was interested in extending the corridor. I'm not sure what the name of it is, Tyra, but up Route twelve.
I know what you're talking about, the Thompson Corridor Development District.
Right, right. So, and I don't remember what the other issue was, but it seemed that there were a couple of items that were discussed that. So, and I don't remember what the other issue was, but it seemed that there were a couple of items that were discussed that, at the question and answer, that, um, would require some changes in what's being proposed.
The other one might have been Chairman Perotti Brown raising the issue of, uh, some of the, of defining livestock more accurately according to our intent. That's the only thing I can remember that came up near the end there.
Okay. But I think that that zone, that possible expansion or extension of that zone was an important issue to bring up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn.
You're welcome.
Carolyn, uh, if, if, if that groundwater, of course, I've flipped away from it, is made as a standalone provision, is there anything that you think needs to be added there to make that a more useful article? It's always been, it's another one of those ones, kind of like interior lots that's just floated around in a few places and never had a good home.
Mm-hmm. Well, um, I think in the, in the older regulations, there, there was a complete section on groundwater protection. And, uh, there, it was pretty complex. Um, I don't think this needs to be quite that complex. I think, I think that in looking at the groundwater, the Protecting Connecticut's Groundwater Guide for local officials, that was published in 1997 by the DEP. I think that it's certain uses that would, that would be kind of like a red flag. So I don't know if maybe we want to list those, but it seemed to me that it was simplified by just referring to that guide. But we could talk about that, Tara, if you'd like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Including the groundwater map would be helpful as well. So it would be only in those areas that we would be particularly concerned about certain uses.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Tara.
Yeah.
The, Tara, what happened to the enterprise zone? See, now Carolyn brought up extending that, you know, that?
Nothing, nothing happened to it. It, it exists. It, it, but that's not a, it's not a zone in the sense of zoning. It's, it's more like a, like an overlay that is at the state level. We're just a part of it.
Right, but that was approved, right? So say if we're going to have commercial development in this new plan of this downtown mill and that whole corridor, uh, it's beneficial. I, I don't know where this, I forgot where this enterprise zone encompassed, but, uh, maybe that's something we, we ought to look at again too, is to see if we can get authorization from the state to encompass that whole mill town rehabilitation.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. Um, I think we've got a quarterly meeting for the enterprise zones. Um, I want to say in early September. I just got a, I just got a, um, an email about it recently from DECD. I will certainly bring that up in terms of, you know, if the footprint can be expanded as to where we qualify in that based on the new zoning regulations. It makes sense to do that once they're adopted, obviously.
Well, I, I think, you know?
We're in the enterprise zone as it exists right now.
What do you mean? Yeah, but how far up does it go?
Uh, it's pretty much, it's pretty much anything with, with access off 395.
So would that encompass what Carolyn was bringing up all the way Route 12 into the Dudley line?
I think it probably does right now, but if it does not actually include that as a footprint, you know, once those, assuming that that is a change that the commission makes, uh, then I think that that would be viewed favorably. I don't think there'd be any, the, the enterprise zone is, is about expanding enterprise, which is exactly what that would do. So if that's the direction that you guys go in, um, then, yeah, when I go to that quarterly meeting, I can say to DECD, hey, we have changed our zoning map. It makes it more business friendly in general. This is the footprint. Are there any ramifications, you know, can it expand on their record? Right, because that's maintained by the state, not by us.
Right, but I, as I recall, that had, that area had to be approved by the state. So if we add something, that's another thing that has to be approved by the state. So I, my suggestion is?
The state doesn't have to approve our zoning. The state just has to decide if they want?
They, they have to, God, I'm sorry.
It, it's okay. We don't have a zone in the town of Thompson that is called the enterprise zone. There is an enterprise zone that the state is in control of into which parts of Thompson fall. So if we change our zoning to align that more with the enterprise zone, the implication is that they might be more interested in expanding the footprint of the enterprise zone. But it doesn't go the other way around. We don't change our zoning because of how the state has decided the enterprise zones fall. We would take our expansion of the possibility for enterprise to the state and say, would you like to expand the parameters of your enterprise zone, which currently includes parts of Thompson?
Right, exactly.
That's the process.
Yeah, that's what I think I was trying to say is that whatever this map says is to see if we can get them to approve it. And, and while you're at it, maybe go to 171 and write the Quinna bargain. That would take care of that whole Y, you know, 395 going about right towards Southbridge and the other one going to Dudley.
Well, that's, that's for you guys to discuss and decide, you know, what, in the final instance, right? I mean, I can say that that was going to be on my, on my punch list with Cindy, uh, you know, um, headed into the end of the public hearing on Monday, you know, when we accept the, the, any email comments that come in. Um, Cindy and I were going to put together a, a memo together with a list of final recommended edits based on everything we've heard. And that's, that's going to be on it, the expansion of the corridor district, certainly up, uh, the remainder of the length of Route 12. Now, nobody's talked about 171 yet. It doesn't mean that that conversation couldn't happen.
What do you mean? I just did, I just talked about.
Well, prior, prior to this moment.
Okay. No, I, I, it just popped into my mind while, while we'll ask, while we're asking, because maybe going up, because we know there's businesses, you know, where the old, uh, what was that? It's not Walmart, Extramart was, you know, that?
Yeah.
That business complex is still empty. So maybe that, you know, because there's certain benefits of being in that enterprise zone, that maybe that would spark an interest in that building if they have certain, uh, things from the state grants or whatever comes easier by being in that enterprise zone.
I am totally down with that idea.
I think that's pretty much the way it works is that, if, you know, when you're looking for grants and if it's, if your endeavor is in that zone, then the state is more likely to help you out. It's worth a shot.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm totally on board with the idea.
Okay, Joseph, that's my comment.
Uh, anyone else? Any other comments from the public at this time?
I have a question, if I may.
Of course, Ms. Wurge.
Okay, um, Tara, does the state have the enterprise zone boundaries mapped? Or is it just a Google explanation?
I think that they do, although I have trouble finding it. Let me see what I can find online while we're all here. Enterprise Corridor Zone, find incentives for development along the Route 8 corridor and Interstate 395. All right, that's on DECD. See if we have a map. No, it just says, contact NECOG along I-95. The towns are Griswold, Killingley, Lisbon, Plainfield, Putnam, Sprague, Sterling and Thompson. That's what it says. There is no picture of a map.
Yeah, that's too bad. Thank you.
There are definitely maps of the opportunity zones, uh, but we do not fall in that. There's a little one over in Putnam, but those were set, um, without any input from anybody locally and they are not open to revision at this time.
Thank you.
Been an hour, Mr. Chairman. We did not set an end time for this, partly based on not knowing how many folks were coming in. I just wanted to point out that we are at an hour and also invite again anybody from the public who came in to hang out if they wanted anything to say.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
I have one more comment if I may add it in, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, Ms. Wurge.
I, the, in the actual drawing of, of the zoning map, when, before the final one is prepared, I, I think perhaps care should be taken that, that the coloring, um, is like equidistant either side of, of the road. And I'm specifically looking at the, the corridor zone. When you graphically, when you look at the map, it appears wider on like the southwest and narrower in the northeast. And with no numbers assigned to it, people will just like scan it in and draw whatever they want. So when, when the zone line isn't coincident with a property line, perhaps if you just have in your mind that it's supposed to represent 300 feet from Route 131 on either side, that somebody take the care to draw it like that. So if it's ever questioned how far back into the middle of a property it goes, then people would know that your intent, you know, was some equal amount and whatever distance that was.
Thank you. Uh, if, if there are no further comments at this time, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to our regular meeting on Monday, July 27th at 7:00 PM.
I will make that motion that we, whatever you just said, continue it on Monday.
Oh, I think the motion was to close, to continue the public hearing till the 20, uh, July 27th at our regular meeting.
Yes.
And I'll second that if that's what Mr. Krogel said.
Mr. Krogel has moved to continue the public hearing to our regular meeting on Monday, July 27th at 7:00 PM. Mr. Rice has seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion?
Joe, just one question is that all the things that were discussed tonight will be brought up at, at our next meeting, right? To vote on, i.e. being the concerns that, uh, the lawyer had, I don't see, Mr. Heller had and the ones that Janet had, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, so John, yeah, I and Tara have been taking, um, notes on, on, on the comments. Um, and when we get to the discussion of the public hearing, um, I, yeah, would like all the comments to be part of, of the discussion. One way or another.
Other, other will either approve them or not approve them, right?
Right, right.
Okay, I'm good then, thank you.
Right, and, and part of the point again, John, of leaving it open was in case we received any email comments last minute for those who were unable to attend tonight. That was just an extra polite measure that we took because of the inability to meet in person. Uh, so that is the purpose of the continuation. And Cindy and I will have our final recommendations as well.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, a yes vote will continue the public hearing. A no vote indicates a desire to do something else with public hearing. Mr. Hill?
No, Alvin Hill.
I'm sorry, Alvin Hill, no?
Yes, correct, no.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Santos?
Brian Santos, yes to continue from Monday? Is that, yeah, okay, yeah.
Mr. Krogel?
Mike Krogel, yes.
Mr. Popowski?
Popowski, yes.
Ms. Langlois?
Shaleen Langlois, yes.
Ms. Chetel? Kristen Chetel, yes. Mr. Rice?
John Rice, yes.
Mr. Wurge?
Yes to continue.
Yes to continue.
Mr. Wurge, yes. And Joseph Brody Brown, yes. Uh, the public hearing will be continued to July 27th. As Tara mentioned, and I would like to reiterate, we do encourage continued comments to be emailed to, to Tara, planner@thompsonct.org. And we'll accept those, those comments through the public hearing. And we'll also entertain comments at that meeting. With that, the next item on our agenda is our next meeting, which is, uh, Monday, July 27th at 7:00 PM. We, we assume. And with that, the next item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion.
John Rice, so moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Rice, seconded by Mr. Santos to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned at 7:09 PM. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night.